Recording. It usually says recording in progress.
Yeah, okay. We report.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five Board of Ed meeting. We are calling the meeting to order at seven oh two P P M. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting set forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education Office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of today tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mister Cruz, could you please call attendance?
Mister Walker. This is Farrar.
Yeah.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
Mrs. Vazala.
Here.
Mister Boone.
Here.
We have Quorum. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January ninth, two thousand and twenty five?
I'll move that.
May I get a sec?
I'll second.
Okay, can we please have roll call?
Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Vazala?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And then are we gonna go right into the superintendent report with, uh, Diane De Giuseppe?
Good evening. We have a presentation tonight about the H B W proposed schedule, and you'll notice it's also on the agenda for board approval. If the board needs more information when after Mister Galpercheck's presentation, we can table it. I'm trying to, we'd like to get this rolling so we can start presenting to families and stuff.
Mister Walker? Quick question. Why is it? Why does the board need to vote on this?
You know, it's it's a big change. It's a change in the start time of the school day. It's it's not a change in the number of minutes that are taught, but it's a change in the way we allot time to physical education and to world languages. I just thought it would be prudent to have the board approve.
But it's it's more symbolic, though, in that this, could the school just do this without the board's permission?
To be honest with you, we never made, in my former districts, we never made big change without having board approval. Whether it's required or not, I'm not sure, but it is programmatic changes, which we would have you approve if we're curricular.
Okay.
So I mean, I can check with Kyle to.
Well, I'm just, I'm just understanding what, you know. I haven't heard the presentation, but like I just wanted to know what the REM, are we the the final stop of this is is no or or I I I kind of think the district would be able to do it if they if they wanted to without the boards.
Probably.
Consent.
It's just, it's it's been a practice of mine for years to.
I I I understand. That's fine. Thank you.
Sure. So I have some, I have a couple of items that I I think are important to mention, and then I'll turn it over to Mister Cruz and our student rep, and then we'll get Mister Galbercheck up in front of the board. Tomorrow evening marks the first college admissions panel at Verona High School. It starts at seven P M. in the auditorium. Representatives from Lehigh University, the College of New Jersey, University of New Hampshire, Binghamton University, and the College of Charleston will present and take questions on the following topics. Trends in college admissions, making applications stand out, activities and extracurriculars, early planning for college applications, and this is, this program is really targeted for grades, students in grades nine to eleven. And so early planning for college application focuses on one of the most impactful steps that they can take now to strengthen future applications. Letters of recommendation, what role do they play in your admissions decision, impact of demonstrated interest on your application? The role of context. So how do you evaluate students within the context of their high school, particularly one like Verona High School, which is a smaller school? And we have open enrollment in A P and honors courses instead of gated enrollment. So those are questions that these representatives will address. Application challenges and common mistakes and advice for parents. What should parents be doing now to support their students through the application process without overwhelming them? January twenty seventh through thirty first marks the child inclusive schools week that our student rep spoke about last meeting. This year's theme is every voice matters. Monday is communication without words, and we're asking everyone to wear blue. Tuesday is assistive technology and augmented communication, and the theme is red. Wednesday is about music and its use in communication, and color is orange. Thursday is a celebration of world languages, and the color is green, and Friday is how to use your voice for others when they are in need. And that's maroon. So wear your inclusive schools T-shirt if you bought one, or you can wear your Verona maroon and white. Along with that inclusive schools week, there is an inclusive schools poetry contest. Every voice matters. Create a poem that reflects inclusivity, kindness, or belonging. There'll be one winner from each Verona school with a fifty dollar prize for each winner. Thursday, ten, Mister Prouse of Prouse Funeral Home is sponsoring ten staff and board members to attend the Father Mark Paine Institute Symposium, two thousand and twenty five, at Saint Benedict's Prep in Newark. We will be attending and see that that school's unique programming, programming. So they're gonna be bringing us through different rotating professional development groups on community development experience, socioemotional experience, student leadership experience, experiential education, and we'll hear some closing remarks as well as a Q and A with Father Mark. This will provide us opportunities to sit with faculty and administrators from Saint Benedict's Prep to understand some of the logistical challenges and how they how we could apply this model to elementary and middle school grades as well. And Saturday, I'm very happy to be taking part in the Verona Spelling Bee for fourth and fifth grade students, and that's hosted by the Verona Junior Women's Club and held at F M Brown. The superintendent and mayor have historically been judges at this event. This is my third bee and Mayor Tamboro's second bee. It's always a really free event, so I look forward to that this Saturday as well. And that's my report.
Just glad you don't judge my spelling. One quick question on the college administration panel. What days is that tomorrow?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. And it was advertised, so if you were interested, you can send your questions in ahead of time.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to the Business Administrative Report. Mister Cruz?
Yes, good evening, everyone. This month in finance, we have the November two thousand and twenty four Board Secretary, Treasurer, and the Transfer Report, which are all in agreement. As always, this is a particular busy time of year for the business office as we work to close out the calendar year and prepare our W two and ten ninety nine filings. We we recently, we completed our mid-year budget review with the county office. This review evaluates the fiscal efficiency by comparing our performance to districts of similar size and type across the state. Residents are able to, if they're interested to see this report, they could actually go on to NJ.gov under the Tax Payers Guide to Education Spending, and I I believe I'm, I actually feel really good about the way that we've been performing across, especially compared to our peers and especially in Essex County. In addition, we're actively preparing the fiscal twenty five, twenty six budget. Mrs. De Giuseppe and I will continue to review and hold meetings early February, leading up to the preliminary budget presentation with schedules for February twenty twenty fifth, the second board meeting of February. Once the governor releases the state aid figures, hopefully before the beginning of March, we will have our alternative budget presentation, which will be scheduled on March, it's scheduled to be shared and presented on March eleventh. That concludes the presentation for my my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to our student report by Ryan Gu.
So good evening, everyone. So where as we are continuing into January, we are definitely encroaching on the end of the semester and the second marking period. And with winter sports continuing, there is in fact a basketball game today against New York Academy for the boys team and for the girls' basketball team, a game against East Orange. And to my knowledge, they both went well, but yesterday members of the swim team competed at the Super Essex County Conference Championships with the the girls placing fifth overall in the in the conference, which is very impressive. And moreover, there is also a senior night swim meet this Thursday at the Moncler Y M C A. Avant Garde is presenting a karaoke night for students on Tuesday, January twenty eighth at six P M. here in the V H S Learning Commons. And as Miss De Giuseppe had stated before, next week is inclusive schools, schools week with the spirit days from January twenty seventh to the thirty first. And I'm gonna keep sounding like a broken record repeating what she said, but we do have, of course, college admissions panel, and I do encourage students to attend to and also their parents to well, gain insight insights about college application process and just the general admission process, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Now we are gonna have a presentation by Dave Galpercheck, who's the principal of H B W about the H B W schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to be able for you to discuss the Sorry about that. Thank you, Mister Giuseppe, members of the board. I'm Dave Galpercheck, Principal of H B Whitehorn, and I am thrilled to be here before you discuss a schedule that we have, that's been just about two years in the making that we have ready, that we have in place to begin in the twenty five, twenty six school year. I'm going to just share with you a general overview of that schedule. But before I get into some some length, we we started in July of twenty three with a two meetings of volunteer teachers who came in and shared some feedback and thoughts on a schedule from their members of the administrative team. We've had countless meetings and discussions and and conversations on what schedule would be the best to meet the needs of our students. There is no perfect schedule, and so there's always give or take within a schedule and within the the parameters that we have, but we are confident that we have a schedule that moving forward will meet better meet the varying needs of our students while also maximizing the the strengths of our excellent staff. First slide for the sake of context is just a general overview of our current schedule. In short, it's probably similar to a schedule that all of us have went through when we were in school. It's it's a traditional eight-period day. The classes are forty five minutes long. It's an eight-period day, but seven, one of those classes is lunch and recess, so really a day that's seven periods at forty five minutes apiece. All across the board, grades five through eight, students have four core classes. Fifth and sixth grade, and then seventh and eighth grade are on slightly varying tracks between world language, phys ed time, fifth and sixth grade has a win period right now. I'm a by and large, the takeaway is that we currently have a seven, seven, seven classes that meet forty five minutes per day throughout the year. In going through this, our mission, and forgive me while I read it to you, it was to establish a responsive schedule that prioritizes increased instructional time in the core content areas, supports student wellness, and repurposing staffing in an effort to maximize positive student outcomes academically, socially, and emotionally. So this schedule, again, before I dive into it, it does retain all of our staff members within our building. There's not a need for additional staff. There's not a need an area for reduction of staff. It takes our existing staff and we believe puts them in places to better serve all of our students. So taking the emission, we we develop priorities. So it's no secret that we, with our current schedule, we have forty five minutes of literacy time. Grades five through eight, where the state recommendation is a minimum of ninety minutes of of literacy time in in grades five and six, and so we want to make sure, especially at a minimum, we were able to increase literacy time and also in in math in grade five. We also have prioritized, and this is something that started before the development of this schedule, but really prioritizing the transition points when students enter H B W and when they exit H B W, and how can we make those transitions better for students? And again, using staff but to to provide interventions for students who are struggling, we already do that, but how can we reshape that in a way that better meets the needs of our students while leaning on the strengths of our existing staff? So the schedule we have developed for next year, and I recognize it doesn't say lunch and recess in there. I promise you, we have lunch and recess, but for the purposes of of comparing and contrasting, the the main point here is that the the schedule we plan to implement has six periods rather than seven. But the key difference is those six periods will be fifty five minute periods. So we're going from a seven act, seven classes at forty five minutes to six classes at fifty five minutes. So every day, every class, it's ten minutes of increase in direct instruction. I can't tell you how many lessons I've seen where the the end of the lesson, the teacher says, I wish that we had five more minutes, ten more minutes, twenty more minutes, because it's really challenging. Our teachers do a great job, but oftentimes, obviously, the heart of what we do or what our teachers do is to get to critical thinking, to analysis, to grappling with with complex tasks, to developing hypotheses and testing them, especially if you're in a science lab or a tech ed lab or any class you name, really, there are different examples of why, once, once you you get to the point, there's, there's often a need for, oh, man, if we only had five more minutes, ten more minutes, we'll get to that tomorrow. And so and and really having a fifty five or longer minute period is is something that we've been looking at even since I got to H B. Before the pandemic, we were looking at ways to make our lessons a little bit longer. So that is is sort of the, in a summary, the big takeaway. Some details, our start time, right now, we we start homeroom at eight thirty. We'll be starting at eight twenty next year, so ten minutes earlier. We'll be dismissing around the same time as we currently do. Again, to emphasize the instructional time, the contact time that 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 teachers, you know, Janet, especially teachers have with their teachers increases ten minutes every day in in all of their classes. The schedule also that we have in place, it doesn't have to rotate, but we are planning to have the schedule that rotates over a six-day cycle. In contrast with the Verona High School, our schedule will not have a rotate and drop, meaning we're not dropping any classes. We are having every class every day, the six, in a six-day cycle, those those six periods will I'll just try to go back to this visual. And I'll preface this, and the educators in the room might will agree with me that that students pick up a rotating schedule more easily than adults do. Students, they're they're gonna get it quickly, and it, but in short, let's say the first day one, you have, a student will have period one first, period two, the period three, one through six in sequence. The next day will be called day two, and we'll start that day with period two, and then they'll have period three and period four. Then on day three, they'll start their day with period three and period four, so on and so forth, so that students have throughout the six days, every class they have will be their first class of the day, their last class of the day, their third class of the day. And there are a lot of benefits to this. There's, there's a lot of research that supports a rotation. Just think of the student who might struggle in, say, math, and they're not a morning person, and they're slated with math period one every day for a hundred eighty days. The outcomes are probably not going to be what they should be. Think of that last period of the day, if if you're, if students, a lot of students are, you know, might be tired by that point, and if that's their most challenging class likewise, or that class that's right after a big game of four square at the recess field, and then they have to come in and and focus on a class they struggle most with. A rotating schedule allows us to see students at different times of the day. And we think that there are a lot of benefits to this. We've, we actually had a rotating schedule during hybrid learning during COVID out of necessity. We had when students were coming in person in the morning and then learning from home in the afternoon. In order to have students not always come into school for certain classes and then learn from home on certain classes, we developed a rotating schedule that was really well received by our teaching staff, and it was reiterated when we met with the staff in those two July twenty three meetings that a rotating schedule would be one that was supportive. So that's a a big part of the schedule. Again, the schedule works without a rotation, but there are a lot of benefits to having a rotating schedule. And then another key difference with this schedule, a key strength of the schedule is in that we get that grade five literacy and math time. In order to make the fifth grade experience more elementary in nature, let's face it, a lot of fifth graders are in middle or in elementary schools in other districts. And and we do, our teachers do a great job in in supporting that transition to H B Whitehorn. We 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 have developed a plan where we're going to, the teachers will have even more eyes on students, more supportive of students while providing with that increase in 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 math and literacy time. So for example, I'll go back to the schedule just to to view it. Let's look at grade five where it says, you know, there are four cores throughout the day. We're going to have right now, we have teaching, teaching teams of science, social studies, math, and literacy teachers, four individuals who teach those four subjects. We're going to shift to a pro, a model that has one individual will be the literacy teacher and the social studies teacher. And then another teacher will be the math teacher and the science teacher. Those two teachers will be teams. They will share the same forty five, fifty students throughout the, throughout the majority of the day. And let's take literacy, for example, the literacy teacher on day one will have, you know, could teach both blocks of literacy, hundred ten minutes of literacy time. And then the next day, teach one section of literacy, one period of literacy, and one period of social studies. So we will see a reduction of social studies for literacy. But right there in a two-day period, we've had a hundred sixty five minutes devoted for literacy time, whereas we currently have much fewer than that. So that's, and it's going to, conversely, on the math side, the teachers and the supervisors don't think we need as much time for math as we do for literacy. So we're probably looking at at a day, even though the the math science teacher will have students for those two blocks that are fifty five minutes, that might look like in most days where it's the one full math block, and then part of that second time, the teachers meeting with those students, some that might be devoted to math and the remainder devoted to science. So science will happen most likely every day under this new model. These are going to be determinations throughout, you know, throughout the year, as as supervisors and teachers work with one another, and depending on the unit and the the lessons that teachers are doing. But in short, there's a lot of time that will will be added in in literacy and in math. And again, those two teachers will be sharing, you know, the one teacher, one, the literacy, social studies teacher will have about twenty two students. The math science teacher will have twenty two students, and so they will, and so we have four teams at that grade level, sharing the forty, forty five students, which would be more similar to the elementary age than it is, you know, what we do now and have been for a long time, sending students here to fifth grade and right away into that eight-period kind of factory model day that where they're constantly changing classes. Yeah, please do. And there's a lot of information.
That's okay. This the teams, is this only in fifth grade?
So it's only in fifth grade. At the other grade level, six, seven, and eighth grade, we will still have common planning time where there are grade level teams and meetings to discuss students.
But they would remain content areas. But the teams in fifth grade are the only ones that will be teaching E L A and social studies, math, and science.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Where do we get that time? Mister De Giuseppe alluded to before, in in seventh, eighth grade, we're phys ed world and world language are currently offered daily. We're going to have those alternate every other day. World language, we currently take seventh and eighth grade, and that's our equivalent to math, French, or Mandarin level one. So students who've gone through eighth grade here at a language, enter Verona High School, taking level two language. That won't change, but we're going to view six, seventh, and eighth grade years as that level one. And eat, but we, there are great benefits from the language, even though the time is going to be cut in half, it means the class sizes are being cut in half as well. And our world language classes are large, so right now, we have classes of twenty five, twenty eight, and even thirty students in a world language class, and and if the goal is fluency in a forty five-minute period, it's really challenging. Our teachers do the best they can. They do a great job of it, but it's really challenging to engage those twenty five or twenty or thirty students conversationally in a period. When you have a class that's twelve or thirteen or fifteen, rather than there, there's a double the opportunity for a teacher to get meaningful dialogue. The goal would is dialogue, is is fluent dialogue between students. And again, as much as our teachers really do a fine job, the the greater gain, we believe, will take place with the smaller classes every other day.
And it's typical to have six, seven, eight curriculum equal the level one.
Right. Thank you. Fifth and sixth grade is currently our win period. That does, so the win period will is eliminated to help create a, help us go from seven to six periods. Course support for special education students is within that win period. We are not eliminating that. We are still going through some of the the details on that, but we are, we will be maintaining core support it in a different form and a different point in the day, and it will will come through more, there will be some paths that that parents and their case managers will be able to discuss in terms of what their core, core support experience looks like. I alluded to before the transition points. We also, it's, again, this started this year, but we also have, for the first time, a counselor dedicated to just our fifth grade students, Miss Ramirez, who also serves as the anti-bullying specialist for both the elementary schools and and the middle school. She spends a lot of time at the elementary schools, talking with students, getting to know them, getting them, you know, working with them, trying to begin that, the the form those relationships and begin that transition to the middle school, and then as students, fifth grade counselor, there's already a friendly face who with whom students already already have had conversations. And then as students, fifth grade counselor, there's already a friendly face who, um, you know, with whom students already, already have had conversations. It's also allowed us to, our, our other counselors, Ms. Warshaw, Ms. Ferriely, to have slightly smaller, their casos are, have been big. So by taking a grade level off their plates has been really helpful in having, letting them. Continue to work more deeply with their students, uh, and cultivating, so especially. Those who might be struggling, the, the transition from eighth grade out of eighth grade to, to high school. Um, I mentioned before, the, um, there will be planning time that, that's in place, the planning time. Uh, or, or common times where teachers have off will exist in this new schedule. Some of that time will be for meeting as, as, at a grade level to discuss students, just as we do now with the current house model. We, we meet, and the teachers meet regularly to discuss students academically, academic, social and emotional needs. That will continue at a grade level, and we have a plan in place for, uh, what that will look like. Um, and there's also time, but, but let's face it, good instruction comes out of, uh, a good, learning comes out of proper instruction. And having teachers who teach co- classes in common, having them have the opportunity to, uh, sit down and work with one another. Has great benefits, so we are able to maintain that in this, this new schedule. Intervention, students who are struggling, we have intervention in place now, um, but at each grade, uh. In, in fifth grade. We don't, we won't, don't plan at the moment to have an interventionist because of the, uh, length of time that those two. Teachers will be working with students, that intervention for the most part should happen there, and we'll have to visit that if we, if that becomes a. Challenge, we don't anticipate that, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, um, at each grade level, we ha- will have a math and literacy teacher. Who will, um, serve as an interventionist and who, um. When, as needs arise, support, uh, working with students and, and, um, addressing them. We've talked about the possibility of having one person. Two can be specifically assigned as an interventionist, that's something that we'll continue to, to look at to see if that's a better model or, or even a possibility. Given the confines of, um, of our schedule and our staff. But again, we think that this is, this will help, this, each class size may go up maybe two students, but. In the end, that's negligible compared to the direct intervention that, uh, two teachers at each grade level, math and a literacy teacher. Will be able to provide students who are, um, struggling, and we, again, we do have that in place now. But there are paths within the schedule to make those interventions stronger, um, as a result. And, and we believe that our current cycle offerings have, there's an opportunity here for us to. We have great cycle offerings and, but there are opportunities to potentially, we're not there yet, but to potentially. Take seventh and eighth grade cycle and offer, uh, for example, in an art one, if you will, and then more in advanced art. Or more niche, uh, topic, or computers, or tech ed, or, or music, so, um, those are part of the discussion. But these opportunities do exist. What's next, we did present the schedule with our staff back at our November faculty meeting. There will be some shifting, like I said, especially in fifth grade where, um, we will no longer have teams of four. Uh, four teachers of science, social studies, math, literacy teacher, um, so there will be some staff members who are going to. Move to a different grade, or a literacy teacher is going to be taking on, um, social studies as well, so we are. As an administrative team, we've been looking at that and plan to, uh, within the next few weeks. Share that with those, those staff members. Then ultimately, we'd like to do, um, have a presentation to the Verona community to, um, in, in an evening. Professional development, that's going to be key for our staff, we, uh, curriculum writing development. What does it look like to expand my curriculum forty-five minutes a day to fifty-five minutes a day, what do I do with all this time? It doesn't mean just ten more minutes to get started on your homework, so. Those are some things that we'll be working on as we go through the spring and even into the summer, um, and then logistically, there might need to be some. Change amendments to IAPs, um, to reflect the changes in the minutes of our schedule and, um, the, the core support model. So that's. The end of my overview, I know there are a lot of more detail that are probably missing, but, um, I'm open if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Galbcheck, I think the, the, the big takeaway from this schedule is that. When I first started here, I asked the question of, you know, what's the reason for fifth grade being in HB was that? Did we think they were, should be treated as middle school students, or was it a space issue? And it was a space issue, um, so we were really focusing on instruction. And getting those students the level of instruction, um, so it will much, match much better with the, um, dimensions and amplify math. Which really requires those lessons are designed for sixty minutes, fifty-five, sixty minutes, and we're squeezing them into forty-five now. So that'll give flexibility to math, uh, as well, and it will give flexibility to science, so those are the three areas that we've been looking at. Where our students are not necessarily as performing as well as, um, we'd like to see, and the schools that we associate with, so, um. Very happy with all the work that you did, and, um, Mrs. Ackerman was instrumental, Mrs. Peter was instrumental, Dr. Miller was in those meetings. The teachers that gave feedback, just thank everybody that did two years worth of hard work to come up with something that, um. That we think is going to be really positive, the only thing it doesn't do that we talked, uh, two years ago with the board is we thought this would open up. Being able to move some teachers to the elementary world to do some intervention down there, we have a different plan for that, that's, we're working on that schedule as well. What it does do for the HBW students in grades five, six, seven, and eight is it gets real intervention opportunities, so real. Each teacher will teach four core subjects and have the opportunity to teach an intervention section. Versus, and, and not that the wind program wasn't helpful, but it really was a Band-Aid. Thank you again.
Thank you. Um, I, I, just to have a couple of quick questions, probably, probably.
No, one, one second.
Probably is, is the dumbest guy in the room, and I do need to defer to our educators, uh, on the board. Mr. Galvitch, you talked about the, um, we're currently at the forty-five minute mark, uh, and state requirements are. Roughly ninety minutes, and. If I understand you properly, you were talking about. Language arts with social studies and that, that, that's how you can pick up some additional minutes to get you to, to the ninety minutes. My question is, um, i- it, it sounds like that that would be kind of a flexible scale, so how, how do you? On a continuous basis, monitor that you are indeed hitting X minutes in those areas, is that just? A, a target, is it, is it something that maybe after a month you realize, oh, we're, we're only getting, I don't know, seventy-five minutes, we gotta. Adjust, how, how does that, take me through how that would work?
So the, the literacy. Is the primary area where we need a, a significant addition of minutes, um, and that will be, like, like I had said before, it. At least half of the days, if not more, um, there will, students will be having that double block of literacy time. Our supervisors and I, myself, Mr. Lancaster, um, and the, the teachers on the, on the four teams. We're, we're gonna have to have a lot of ongoing dialogue throughout the year. You know, but we're in compliance otherwise with, uh, right now, we're overly compliant in terms of the sci- time we need for science and, and social studies, um, and. I don't think the.
Especially at grade five, I think the answer to the question is the same way we do it in the elementary world, right, so teachers, um. It's actually less regimented in K-four than it is because you'll still have periods, right, so you'll still have a, a block where a teacher will have their schedule. K-four teachers make their own schedule outside of specials, and, um, the principals and the supervisors in certain situations. By checking in and making sure teachers, if you're, if you're, and it's, there's some flexibility, if a teacher's, um, doesn't need ninety minutes of ELA. In grade four, they may push ten minutes into math, but overall, um, to, to get the program accomplished. They're gonna need at least ninety minutes every other day.
But couldn't we, off to, to Mr. Boone's point, wouldn't the lesson plans let us kind of be a metric to see what was taught and for how long and which days?
Yes, so, um, by next year, uh, when every, well, everyone's handing in lesson plans now as of January sixth, so, um. We know there's some growing pains with that, and, uh, we should be able to see that, they're not required to put their start and end time in their lesson plans right now. And it's really just.
I think it would still be, it's still data to show that.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely, sure.
I think also, couldn't it just simply be scheduling, so if, if that teacher is teaching ELA and social studies and they have a ninety-minute block throughout the week, then perhaps on Monday. It's a ninety-minute ELA, on Tuesday, it's ELA and soc- and social studies, so that it's, so that there isn't any, there aren't any questions as to. Who's teaching what when?
Well, we have the benefit of having seen a, a mock-up schedule, so, um, when those two, uh, s- sections lying next to each other. It's one ten minutes in a row, and when one's at the end of the day and the other's at the beginning, they're separated, yeah, there, it's, it's, uh, actually very creative. Uh, and designed so that, um, it's not a hundred and ten minutes every other day in a block, so it's broken up a little.
Right, no, exactly.
Uh, just to clarify a couple of things, currently, the teachers that would be teaching. The ELA and social studies and math and science, they're appropriately credentialed because they would be, they'd have to be credentialed for elementary.
Most of them are elementary credentials.
I understand, because elementary goes to. Fifth grade, to the sixth grade, for credentials, okay, and now. Does this mean that the Carnegie, Olmstead House system is now gone, like, we're not gonna have Carnegie, Olmstead?
So, so that, that is accurate, there won't be, um, a Carnegie House, uh, and an Olmstead House with this new model.
Which means you're gonna have to change your voicemail.
I know, I. It's been many years since I've changed that.
I'm just teasing you.
And then outside the interventions, those would be general ed interventions, like multi-tiered support services type of.
Correct, uh, and, and it could theoretically serve up to over a hundred students in a six-day cycle. The way, you know, I won't bore you with the math, but it could theoretically, depending on the needs of. We're gonna be responsive to the needs of the students, there might be students who need more, you know, in a six-day cycle, two days or three days. You know, we're, we're reluctant to pull students from, it would come from a cycle class, um, excessively, but. Theoretically, we could, we could do small group intervention, pull out, uh, different group, you know, each for over six, uh, days. But we'll, again, we'll be responsive to where the needs are with intervention.
So I'm gonna go off of, um, Mike, because I'm not an educator as well, so I've, I'm just, so for like, say, fifth grade. A teacher who teaches science, and that's what they've been teaching for so many years, just science. So now they're gonna be required to also teach math and science, and am I getting that right, and same thing with. A social studies teachers, now they're gonna have to be literacy teacher, so those teachers that have to do that. For so many years, they've been teaching that one subject, I mean, my boys were in the middle school years ago, so that's what they were used to, so that, to me. If, and I, if I'm an educator, I would feel like that's a lot of catching up of learning, I don't, is, am I?
No, you're, I, we know exactly what you're saying, I think, um, we have teachers that are at HBW that were in the elementary schools prior. That have had recently taught math, recently taught, uh, ELA that are, that, so we kind of get a sense of who we're gonna tap for what. Is somebody gonna have to maybe learn a literacy program, yes, but here's the thing, next year, everybody's gonna have to learn a new literacy program. So every, it's gonna be lots of PD for everyone that's rolling out literacy in this district, because we are changing to, um, a, uh, to adapt. To the new literacy standards, so that's, uh, another committee that's been working all year. That I'm serving on with Mrs. Peter who's running it, and, um, a, a team from each school, I'm sorry, a team from each grade level. To pilot and look at those available, um, more of a shift toward that science of reading.
Move to Pem, um, but also, another hand, like, you could be teaching first grade one year, and the next year, you're teaching the fifth grade. And, and to me, that, that might be more monumental of a, of a transition than just, you know, you know, from one humanity to another. But, but I do understand and respect that, but I, I still kind of think that there's a lot of pros to, to this plan.
I, I, I also, I agree, I think that, um, thank you so much, because I know that it's scheduling is, is a beast and it takes a lot, just even. Think through this all, so to the teachers who are part of it, and to you, I appreciate it, um, I think the two things that are really standing out to me. Kind of just thinking ahead is the idea of MTSS, right, the idea of the intervention and doing that properly, and the idea of strong curriculum. Because I think that while this has the potential to get those extra ten minutes in, and across a week, it's fifty minutes, right? So I do think that, that the fingerprints of that will, will, will be impactful without strong curriculum to tie. And without the training for teachers of what a multi-tiered system of support actually is, then, for lack of a better term, it's a waste. Of time, and, right, so I think, um, you know, I like the idea that it's January, and we're thinking about this now. So that we can think about a rollout for the teachers, but I think as a board too, I'd like to know, you know. What is the investment here, what is the planned curriculum-wise, because as a point, um, as, as a bullet point here, it did note curriculum writing. So that would be five through eight, how are we gonna support the teachers to ensure that if we are doing that curriculum writing? The curriculum is able to be done in the best way, uh, with the most support, and also, if we want to. Have our teachers work as true interventionists, what supports are we gonna give to them so that they can do that with success? So I know that was a loaded.
It is a lot, but I, I heard it, so, Dr. Miller is budgeting to rewrite the curriculum across those grade levels. And we have luckily built into our schedule have many, uh, half-days across the year, as well as two full days for professional development. That will be dedicated to, um, working with the, uh, five, six, seven, and eight teachers on what does an intervention class look like? What are we doing in an intervention class, um, and we, we have a lot of people that know what that looks like here in district that can help us turnkey.
The fifth grade, so if we're looking at using those fifth grade blocks and to provide that small group instruction, which I think is great. Even tapping into maybe some of the, you know, fourth grade or the elementary school teachers who may be more used to doing that type of instruction with a small group. To, to provide that support, um, because I think that that's gonna be a heavy lift there for fifth grade teachers.
Yeah, it's just they're very used to teaching and they're good at it, um, but we have been looking at literacy in the sixth, seventh, eighth. More like the way we teach it in upper grades versus that, like guided reading, small group instruction. So, yeah, it's, um, it, it's gonna take a couple of years to get it really down to a science, and no pun on the science of reading, but, yeah. Any, any other questions, it's Mr. Galbert?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a lot of work.
Thank you, and thank you to all the teachers and administrators and staff and everyone who put this all together, um, like it started, it, this has. Been like an eighteen-month project, so finally, nearing the end.
Remember when they first went to the house system.
I do too. Um, okay, so let's move on to committee reports. First up is education.
Name it House Farzella.
I wanna be.
Um, okay, so we, obviously, the majority of our ed committee work this, um, during this meeting was really the HBW structure, so we had. Some pretty in-depth conversations around that, um, so I'll just go through and touch on some of the things that we spoke about quickly. The Splash Program, um, will be back again, which was a Title I funded program for students who are, um. Struggling in reading and math to provide those, those interventions, um, we'll continue to keep you posted as to, uh, when that program will begin to. It's over the summer, but we'll have the exact dates and the specifics. Um, coming, um, let's see, we have the, um. Math testing that is starting to be administered, uh, in grades one through four, January, so this week, the twenty-first to the twenty-fourth. Fifth through eighth is the twenty-second to the twenty-third. And then at VHS, the high school will start administering their growth assessment to algebra and geometry students, or that was already done on January ninth, sorry. Let's see. What else was important here? Dr. Miller is continuing to go to recruiting, you know, to job fairs to continue to recruit, you know, potential teachers for the next school year. That's really, I'm thinking that's really it here. There wasn't really anything, it was mostly things that had to do with the HBW.
Mrs. Farrar, on this, I see the highlight about, and this was something that we talked about at the top of the meeting, about the college, college visits and the college panels. And I see you have an entry about various college also on here, and that leads me to a broader question is, is there any discussion about getting such fairs and panel discussions on non-college tracks, like opportunities through maybe an electricians program, plumbing opportunities, trade school opportunities? Are we looking to have those discussions as part, part of this as well?
So this, this is for recruiting teachers?
Right, right, right. But, but it just, seeing that got me thinking.
Like, as a, as a, as a
Right.
college fair to have other tracks? I mean, I'm not sure, Mr. Giuseppe, you may be better off than me to answer, because we've not discussed.
We have talked about, even when Mrs. Freski was on the board, she has had made those similar requests. We have not done a lot of that, but we should be doing more of that. So we'll, we'll get a move on on that.
Right, and just seeing the colleges again got me thinking on those, on that level.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to facilities?
Not much to really go through. So the fencing at Lanning Avenue School has been completed. The repairs at Forest Avenue for the HVAC has been taken care of. Let's see, where else are we? HBW, we did speak about that project of, at the, the office space and putting that on hold and putting that towards maybe looking at, you know, classrooms and other things down the road with sizes of, you know, class sizes. We did have discussion regarding the high school, again, for the future, the press box, we've been discussing this here at meetings, our lower field baseball bleachers, as well as the turf. And that will probably hopefully look to, I think, they are going to try to get a quote for maybe all three of those, if I'm correct about that, Mr. Cruz. And I think that might be it, did I miss much?
No, I think the, I, I, I mean, at risk of underplaying the, the press boxes, almost a meeting by meeting issue, but yeah, we need to choose the direction we want to go sooner than later.
That was fast on that fence, Atlantic. Thanks for hustling that.
Anything, did I miss anything? No, thank you.
Okay, move on to finance committee.
Yes, Mr. Cruz touched on a lot of the highlights at the top of the, top of the meeting, a couple of other things to color in here. The, from the technology standpoint, we have replaced all teacher devices. And then also installed some new APs for our servers. There's also been an addition of door access readers as well as security cameras throughout the district. The food service RFP is moving forward. Our new time tracking device is installed. This just allows for just better time logging and more efficient management of, of that time. The other issue that came up is we are receiving proposals on the retrofit upgrade of the high school external messaging board. For those of you who drive by every day, you see the little computer glitch, and so that this has been a sore spot. But it is, when we do get the proposals, we do want to take a good hard look at the cost of this. This is not something that is cheap, no. So there, there is.
At the last referendum that was put up, or right before it? Yeah, so it's ten years.
Ten years is.
We're talking about the marquee, right?
Correct, the front marquee. And it is not, and we're, we're looking, we're not looking at extravagant improvements either, and that is not cheap. So when we, when we discuss those proposals, it's
Anything else? Okay, so we will move on to public comments on agenda action items. If anyone has a comment on any item we are voting on, please come to the podium. Seeing nobody. You know, we'll do it. We will go on to discussion items, new business, old business. Does anyone on the board have anything they wish to share or discuss?
I just want to say, I was at the HB with Mrs. Giuseppe, we were at the HBW's winter concert.
It was wonderful.
And with students, we just have so many amazing students, and so we saw the staff, and I would just like to thank everyone, because it was just the auditorium, there was not a seat to be found.
Nope, I stood.
Yeah.
But just seeing the number of solos, solo performances was really impressive.
Yeah, so our, our music teachers are very impressive and the students as well, so.
I'm always impressed with how they give everybody, seemingly everybody, a chance to shine. And it, it just builds an enthusiasm that I think is infectious.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring up a point, and I want to be clear. I, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm really only speaking for myself here. And in my role as a board member, I feel a responsibility to represent everybody in Verona, I don't care what a person's politics are. I have friends and families across the political spectrum, I make a point of getting along with everybody. It's really in that spirit, though, that I consider myself also an unflinching ally of our strong LGBTQ plus community. And over the, it was a little emotional for me, but over the last several months, I've heard from friends and families and community members, they've expressed concerns for their safety since this fall. And I've encouraged them to, to remain optimistic. But I, you know, as a straight white male, I don't know what that feeling is like, other than to offer my support. But yesterday, after reflecting on some of the comments made by some of our political leaders at yesterday's festivities, I, I just want to underscore that I will continue to support the LGBTQ plus community and anybody who feels on the margins. And that I will continue to fight for those rights and their rights for belonging in Verona as a member of the board. And I do, what I have said is that I, I point to the fact that inclusivity remains very much part of this district's strategic plan, and it will be for the next several years. And I will not back down from that commitment. Again, I underscore this with a desire to represent every voice in Verona, regardless of where they stand. So thank you for that, that time.
Thank you, and just all our policies that we have voted on and have put in place remain in place until they're changed, so as of right now, they are in place as they were last week and last month, so. Moving on to correspondence, any correspondence?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we are going to move on to action items. Can I please have a motion to approve action items A1 through A2?
I will move it, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Boone, any discussion? Okay, seeing that, Mr. Cruz, can we do a roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to education. Can I have a motion to approve, yeah, to approve B1 through B4?
Also move it, move it.
Okay, motion by Ms. Prisco, second by Ms. Ferrera, any discussion? Seeing that, can we please have a roll call, Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, moving forward. Can I have a motion for C1 and C2? Second by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Prisco, any discussion?
I just have something quick for Mr. Flood, for the marching band director. I'm happy to see him come on and congratulate him for it. I just want to make sure for the, it's a nice stipend, I know that it's a tremendous amount of work, but it's also a very, I think it's a significant stipend, so I just wanted to ensure that as far as the marching band goes with this, with this shift, that we're still going to see competitions, full match, marching band, not just a pep band.
Correct, yes.
Great, thank you so much.
And actually, because we're most likely separating marching band from concert band, because we have two different people teaching it now, this stipend will be stretched further, because that'd be more afternoon and evening practices.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Mr. Cruz, can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving forward, there is nothing under facilities, so moving to finance. Can I have a motion for E1 through E?
Nine.
Nine?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Walker, second by any discussions?
I just want to make a quick comment on E7, I would just like to, you know, the donation for the forty-three thousand dollars from the estate of Bruce Bonds, it's just a very generous donation to the music program, so.
Yeah, thank you.
That's really nice, yeah. Class of nineteen sixty-seven, I might add to.
That is an amazing donation, and just a question of, for my education, how, how do those funds get used for the music program? I mean, that's a pretty broad mandate.
Yeah, and we are meeting with the music teachers to, to make those decisions. I'm sure that's probably going to be part of it, and that we need new band uniforms. That's not going to cover it, so we'll have which solidifies Mrs. Farrar's question as to whether or not we're going to be a pep band or still a marching band. Yeah, so Mr. Lynch has reached out to Mr. Cogdill and me to organize a meeting to go over what we potentially could use this money for.
I have a quick question, for E8, and I don't know if I should know this already, but the SDA grant agreement? I'm, I'm seeing that there is the total project and then the grant amount?
With sixty forty.
Okay, so then the difference is coming, so the grant was for the sixty percent, the difference is coming from our budget, that's what we're seeing there, it's not a different line.
So the grant is forty percent, and we, the board is covering sixty percent.
Okay.
So then, once we, once we're ready, the board is ready to move forward with the project, we'll be taking that out of cap reserves.
Okay, so this is the rod grants. They're, they say SDA, the School District Authority, but these are what we've been talking about as rod grants, yes.
So, okay, so this is what came up about two or three meetings ago, when we were starting to flush out, and then this is, okay, great, thank you so much.
So this is the acceptance of the funds from the state in order to meet the eighteen-month deadline of saying we have the funds to actually meet our obligations for the sixty percent, and we're accepting the forty percent from the state. It doesn't mean that the board has to act on the project yet. So the, the funds will stay with the state, and whenever that project, if it's a year from now, a year and a half from now, that, those funds are already secured.
So we're putting it secure, and then we're going to make the decision in the way in which or what we choose to do.
Correct, and then we'll work with our architect to say, okay, you know what, we're ready to get this project off the House of Market fairing right now, is the right time? And let's actually go out and, and get mechanical HVAC bids for this project.
That's what we'll go through on.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving forward to governance and policy, and I have a motion for F1 and F2.
Before we do, I do have a question on, under regulations, R7441, on the electronic surveillance, can you take me through a little bit?
We just have to have the motion, and then the second, and then we'll have the discussion, no worry. Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Prisco. Now, can we have
Thank you.
questions and comments?
Before we do that, let me just, if everyone can put an M next to R3212, it is also a mandated, it should say M, it's a mandated regulation.
On, on attendance?
Attendance, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So to get to both Policy 7441 and Regulation 7441, as well as student smoking and cooperating with law enforcement, these are revisions that reflect changes to the State Uniform Memorandum of Agreement. So that's what, any, any of the changes here, and really is very miniscule changes, I believe, for other than grammatical changes, the only substantive change in R7441 and Policy 7441 is that it has to be an emergent situation for the police to gain access to our our cameras, and look, so they can't just peek in on a gym class. PE class, sorry.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have one quick question, for the for the attendance regulation, that, it's mandated, but that's brand new, this was the first time.
We have not had it.
Right, okay, so that's, I wanted to bring that up, because I, I want to make sure, especially because it is mandated, that in, in reading through the regulation, I, I just just want teachers to know that this is not, that this is a mandate from the state that we should have always had. Not something that is.
That's why I made sure I said.
That's what, so I made a note for that, because I just want to make sure that the teachers are, A, aware that this will start to become a common practice, and also aware of the fact that it's just us being in compliance to the state and not anything other than that for, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Cruz, can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Walker? Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion, second to that.
We had Walker and Prisco.
Moving on to public comments, seeing as there is no public, we will close public comments. And can I please have a, the next scheduled public meeting will be held on Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, beginning with confidential session at six and seven PM, public session in the Verona High School Learning Commons. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Ms. Prisco, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ferrera, all those in favor? Hi. Okay, the meeting is adjourned at eight eleven. Thank you, everyone have a nice